July the 2nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. If you would, please stand for the prayer by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge of allegiance by councilman in college.
Heavenly Father, with God's praise, we give you praise, Lord. We thank you, Father, for your grace and mercy. We ask you tonight, Father, for your presence in this meeting. We give our leaders discernment, Lord, and beauty. We ask that you continue to place your heads of protection around this city, Father. You got us in the direction you can have us go, Father. And most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, his sacrifice, and Calvary's cross for our sins. We ask all this in his name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Hold on one second, please. Ms. Dunk, y'all can come up. Ms. Dunk, y'all can sit right up front. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Is there any additions or changes? Ms. Janssens.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask you to send the agenda item nine, the article of amendment one, both of them in agreement.
Thank you. Do we have any other changes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order adding consent number nine?
Sub move.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman George?
Yea.
Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Janssens.
City of Gochay's administrative offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, and Friday, July 5th, and observance in the Independence Day. Gochay's farmer's market will be Saturday, July 13th, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at the former senior mall property. Tasty Thursday will be July 25th, starting at 11:00 8:00 AM at the former senior mall property.
Thank you, Ms. Janssens. That brings us to our presentation agenda. The first presentation agenda this evening is by Councilor Catherine Kayat Viaty regarding Home of Grace Addiction Recovery. If you would please come forward. And what a blessing for my cousin to be able to come here and share great things that we have to offer here in Gochay and Binkley, Mississippi.
Thank you. Thank y'all for having me. I'm Catherine. I told you, this is my director, Noel, and we both work at the women's campus. I told her that I'm hoping no one thought that this was an intervention if they walked in and saw Home of Grace Addiction Recovery at the meeting. I wanted to come because, for starters, I have rarely met one family member, one person that addiction has not touched their life in some way, shape, or form, whether that be their own, their child, their friends, their friend's children, a coworker. And that being said, I lived here my entire life, and I was familiar with the Home of Grace, but all I knew was that there was a men's campus in Binkley. I didn't find out there was a women's campus in Gochay until 2009, when I landed there. And it took me a while to figure that out. Not only am I grateful to be able to say that I work there today, but we are no longer just a 90-day program. Our leadership saw a need. There are lots of families that can't let go of their family members. There are single moms, single fathers, jobs that can't let go for 90 days. So they got together and met the need. We now offer at both our men's and women's campuses 30-day programs, 60-day programs, as well as the 90-day program. For some, that isn't enough. For me, it wasn't enough. And so we have extended stay where they can stay for another 90 days. But then beyond that, we also offer phase four, where they basically would be interning. We have outpatient counseling now. We are actually able to do telehealth outpatient counseling. They are based in Arizona, but they're just Home of Grace Counseling. And it is Mississippi, Alabama, Louisiana, Washington State, Arizona, and they are working on Indiana. And when they get Indiana, they'll start getting more states. So beyond that, the classes that we offer. We have the one-on-one counseling. We have group counseling. We have biblical classes, but we also have parenting anger management. The men's class has, men's program offers 24/7 depth with outside volunteers that come teach, like parenting just hands-on with the fathers. The anger management parenting, boundaries, coping skills, relationships classes, because we learned that part of addiction is a habit of toxic relationships, and people don't know how to recognize that. When they leave us, we are now able to offer continued counseling with the counselor that they've received. And we do that in sessions of six to seven sessions, depending on what they signed up for, and that also doesn't count them out for being able to receive the outpatient counseling too. We offer GED. I always forget that, but it's really important because a lot of people don't have it, and we offer the classes. They're able to get their GED while they're still with us. And if they do stay, they're getting on-hand job training. We teach them to do resumes. We teach workable skills. And really, that's, that's why I wanted them, because I figured if I was, if I was, I knew that I wasn't the only one that didn't know what we offered.
Thank you so much, Catherine. If y'all want to follow and get any additional information, you can see them after the meeting or visit the Home of Grace website or Facebook page. And they do a great job in our community. And if you need, feel the need to volunteer or make a donation, go support them. That brings us, next is the Donna Smith Day proclamation. So they'll bring Ms. Donna and her children will come up to the front so we can present her with a very well-deserved proclamation.
It seems just like yesterday, we were at that little one building at Martin Bluff Baptist Church, having many youth events. The whole neighborhood was rallying up there at Martin Bluff Baptist. And Ms. Donna and Mr. Kenny and Mary Martin, Lori, Suzanne, Tommy, it was one big family. Cheryl, Harold, Dennis Harold, a whole big group up there. And if you were not a part of it, you missed out. And it's sad to see that that church is now vacant because it is well-needed up in that community. But today, I feel like we should honor people that give to the community and that volunteer to make our community a better place. So what better person to honor than Ms. Donna Marie Katida Smith? So City of Gochay proclamation. A proclamation designated tomorrow, July the 3rd, 2024, as the Donna Marie Katida Smith Day. Whereas Ms. Donna Smith is a lifelong resident in Jackson County. Whereas Ms. Donna and her late husband of 52 years, Kenny Smith, made the city of Gochay their home in 1974 with their three children. And whereas she became a member of Martin Bluff Baptist Church, where she taught Sunday School, and was over the youth leadership department. And whereas Ms. Donna was an interior decorator for Smith Homes, Inc., and also served as a member of the Women's Auxiliary of Jackson County, Home Builders Association. And whereas, though the majority of her spare time was devoted to volunteering in the Gochay community, Ms. Donna also has a profound interest in art and painting for many years. And whereas, the city of Gochay greatly appreciates and respects Ms. Donna Smith for her commitment and contributions to the city of Gochay. And now therefore, we have resolved that the city of Gochay hereby proclaims tomorrow, July the 3rd, 2024, as Donna Marie Katida Smith Day in recognition of her charitable leadership and positive mentor for many of our youth in the city of Gochay, Mississippi, Mayor Casey Vaughn.
I also think people are deserving, and we don't give these out lightly. And so we, I would like, and the council, to present you with this little token. And it is a key to the city of Gochay, Mississippi, Ms. Donna. Y'all stand. Let's get you.
I love Gochay. I love the people of Gochay. And Kenny, Gochay.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. You hold this, you hold the key, and how? And Suzanne, y'all, I'll get, is that, how do we, we got everybody in the back row? Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Ms. Donna. We appreciate all you do, and you keep up the good work. And if you don't have one of Ms. Donna's paintings, you're missing out because they're beautiful.
I've got these girls to carry on.
That's right. You're in good hands. And all those grandchildren. Thank y'all. Thank you, Suzanne. That brings us to our business agenda item number one, authorization to advertise requests for proposals for solid waste collection and disposals, disposal services, and authorization to advertise for same by city manager, Ms. Janssens.
Yes, Mayor, as you know, your garbage contract expires this year. We revised the request for proposals. We're following the statutory process, so we're asking you to allow us to go out for proposals for our garbage service.
Thank you, Ms. Janssens. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council for authorization to advertise requests for proposals for solid waste collection and disposal services and authorization to advertise for same?
Sub move.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gillett?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, consideration of an amendment to the golf court and low-speed vehicle ordinance by our city manager, Ms. Janssens.
Yes, Mayor, I've been getting several complaints about people riding golf carts on sidewalks and at high rates of speed. The actual implement project was intended to allow golf carts on your designated paths, which did not, of streets with a speed limit below 30 miles per hour. So in response to that, I would like to order some signs to kind of try and cut down on this. City Attorney thought we needed to amend the golf cart ordinance to add, prohibit that and also add the fine that he has prescribed in here. So we recommend a fine in the amount of $500 with no jail time for the first offense, and any offense thereafter will receive five days from jail, all of which has been incorporated into the attached draft ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Janssens. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two?
I didn't understand all she said.
Basically, she stated that we've had complaints of citizens, minors, driving golf carts on sidewalks, and so the attorney thought it was best if we clarified. So the recommendation, the clarification, the first citation, it's a thousand misdemeanor criminal violation punishable with a $1,000 in imprisonment up to 90 days, but the first fine amount is 500 with no jail time for the first offense, and any thereafter will receive five days imprisonment, all of which has been incorporated into the drafted ordinance. Okay. Any other citizen comments? Come to the podium, state your first and last name.
No. I just want to add a question. They can drive on the street.
Mr. Charles Moore?
My name is Charles Moore. They can drive on Westgate Parkway, Gochay, Mississippi. I want to know, can they ride on, like, on Westgate Parkway down, up and down there?
Yes, because they're, on the speed limit, that speed limit, they're allowed. However, they have to be registered with the city and street legal. And they got to have a legal driver's license and insurance.
All right.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council for the amendment, to approve the amendment to the golf cart and low-speed vehicle ordinance?
Sub move.
Motion by Councilman College. We got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so the five days imprisonment, so we looking at you, within the package, it's saying, like, these, these little children, of course, that's what the mayor just said. We got young people who drive in, so you going to imprison five, five days?
No. So the fine set forth is just the fine that you set forth. You don't levy the fine. That happens by the city court judge making pass it.
This is the maximum.
This is just the maximum. Children don't go to city court, they go to youth court. But it's not just children driving the golf carts crazy on sidewalks, it's other people too. And other people are trying to walk on the sidewalk, and I just have numerous complaints about it. So this is just establishing, your maximum fine is less than the statutory maximum fine.
Got you.
So, you know, that's just established in the ceiling. Then it goes to the judge, and the judge decides.
Make a decision.
Yes.
All right, one other thing. So why are they deciding to ride not on the road? Is it that there's not a pathway in that area, or?
Probably that there is, if they don't want to ride, they can't ride on a busy road in excess of 30 miles, you know, the speed limit is in excess of 30 miles an hour, so they're using the sidewalks for the golf carts. But the intent of the golf cart ordinance was for the golf carts to be ridden on roads that are on the golf cart pathways that are on your map that have a speed limit of less 30 miles an hour or less. The intent was not to use your sidewalks to go on, around busy streets, you know, busy pathways.
Right. Okay, so this is like, they're trying to get on Highway 90, or what?
Trying to get, go from Hickory Hills to the elementary school. Something like that.
Which is actually a dedicated pathway.
Right. They're not riding in the dedicated pathway, they're just wanting to ride on the sidewalk.
Oh.
And the sidewalk infrastructure went and built to house.
Right, right, not at all.
A golf cart. It was built for walking and bicycle driving.
Okay. I was just getting a clear understanding, because I, you know.
And no municipal court, don't, Councilman Jackson, don't imprison children. I mean, as you know.
You make the statement, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it forward? Okay, wait a minute.
The youth court judge, Judge Zorn, I handle the minors, but they'll get them to the youth court.
Okay.
But the parents are letting a lot of youth, we're giving a lot of complaints of youth driving golf carts and four-wheelers and go-karts and everything.
So I do see four-wheelers, like, on slower roads, not, they just commuting from house to house or whatever. So is this gonna, is this not pertaining to that, as long as they not on sidewalks or something like that?
They can't drive four-wheelers anymore.
Well, I'm just saying.
I mean, I realize they often, but I'm saying, this ordinance was not written originally for four-wheelers. It has to be street.
So this is not, even this fine is not pertaining to this, though? Am I correct?
No, because that would fall under a different fine, because those aren't even allowed, period, on the streets. Any other council comments? Councilman Jackson?
I have no other comments.
Okay. Mr. Moore, we'll come back to that. Okay, we'll address you later. Councilman Gillett?
Yes, are these fines or penalties in line with the other cities along the Gulf Coast that have golf cart ordinance?
They're less than the Mississippi code that prescribes the fine, so I don't know about other cities. I lessen it tremendously.
They keep it with Ocean Springs. They keep it with Ocean Springs.
Mr. Boardes, who's filling in for Mr. Denoff, said it's in line with the city of Ocean Springs.
And that's counted for every criminal offense in the city, 500.
And he's saying that's normally.
For all.
For all violations in a municipality.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman College?
Good, I think just, I know we include some items in our utility bills at times as far as bullet points. Is there something we can include, just bullet points for this ordinance, and like I referenced, just the main bullet points, like, you know, pathways, legalized drivers, has to be street legal and all that stuff, insurance included in our next utility bill?
It would probably be more effective to do a Facebook post and share it, because I've discovered, when I try to get the word out, I put something to it, and just people don't open it.
Ah, okay. Okay, well, let's go, yeah, we'll do a Facebook post on that, and then maybe include a link to the ordinance, that'd be great. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. On top of that, if we can just add it, maybe on the app, put it out, put it out on the app, maybe, since I think that gets a lot of people's attention also.
Biggest thing is legalized drivers.
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes, to me, $500 sounds like a high amount for a first time a fine, the first time you find them. I'm thinking we need to give them a grace period. If people find out about this, they ain't gonna be happy people out there when they get stuck with a $500 fine.
We're not assessing the fine, we're setting a ceiling. The judge does that.
Okay, the judge does that. We set the ceiling, okay. I got you.
And she's already, and she's already been handling this and following the state guideline, state statute, with their state fines, Councilman Anderson. This is lower than what the state, what she's been issuing under the state mandates.
I see, I'm okay.
Okay. Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I just want to, you know, remind everybody, please, when we voted on the ordinance, we literally have told everybody, get your golf cart registered, 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 registered. Ours is one of the most lax golf, relaxed golf cart ordinance compared to some of our sister cities. Ours, if you're registered in other cities, we made it so they can come and visit our city. If you have family visiting and their golf cart is registered in their city, our city recognizes that. So please, get your golf carts registered. Also, please remind, remind everyone, no minors if you don't have a license are to be driving them. That's for the safety of everybody involved. So thank you all for your hard work, trying to keep the community safe. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Motion carries. Oh, Councilman George?
Yea.
Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
We need to get some, motion carries. We need to get buttons so they can just hit them, and they light up, since we got these phone attendees a lot here lately. That brings us to business agenda item number three, approval of the docket of claims. We've received those by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery. They've been furnished online, and everybody can access them there. That's how we access them also. Do we have any public comments on approval of the docket of claims? None? Do we have a motion by council?
I make the motion, we approve the docket of claims by that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gillett?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery and your department, for your hard work in paying the docket. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion, Councilman George? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. Does anybody want? Councilman Jackson is pulling number nine. Anybody else want to pull one? Okay. Consent agenda items, one, approval of minutes from recess council meeting held June the 18th, 2024. Two, approval of the FY 2023 continuing disclosure submission prepared by Butler Snow LLP. Three, authorization to remove broken office equipment from the city of Gochay's inventory. Four, authorization to advertise for bids to select a bank depository for the period of September 2024 through September 2028 pursuant to Mississippi state law. Five, authorization entered into memorandum of understanding with Mississippi Department of Marine Resources to accept Go Mesa 2024 funding for the Martin Bluff and Hickory Hills sewer improvements. Six, authorization entered into design and construction assistance agreement with Department of the Army for these Gochay water and sewer improvements and to execute the information request form. Seven, authorization to knowledge bids and to word the contract for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, Phase Two, to Sun Coast Infrastructure, Inc. Eight, approval of water and sewage adjustments for July 2024 in the amount of $10,221.96. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda one through eight?
Sub move.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? I mean, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number nine, approval of amendment one to the post opening agreement for the Sound Amphitheater by Ms. Polly Janssens.
Yes, so I just want a clear understanding of this amendment we put within this, the...
Yes, sir, I sent an email out today, but what happened is, you entered into a contract with 46 Entertainment, just owned by Nathan Ball. After you entered into the contract, he bought Peachtree Entertainment. He is the CEO of Peachtree Entertainment. That was after you entered into the contract. He is doing much of the work for talent purchases, ticket sales through Peachtree Entertainment. All this is, your original contract had a provision in there that said, no, I signed, you couldn't assign, meaning he couldn't assign that, his obligations under the contract to another company. So this allows him to assign the responsibilities under the contract to Peachtree Entertainment, which he also owns. But if he is ever not CEO or does not own it, all the obligations revert back to 46. And the whole reason for doing this is, it makes him, it makes paying his sales tax to the state easier. Otherwise, he wouldn't be going through all this. So he's trying to get a sales tax number, or not sales tax number, instead of Peachtree paying, 46 and 46 paying the sales tax, Peachtree can just pay sales tax. But because you own the facility... But because you own the facility, it has to have that Peachtree can be there in your contract. That's basically some goal of it, but state...
So, is Peachtree is here in Mississippi?
No, Peachtree is in Birmingham.
Okay.
Yes. So, he just bought another company in addition to Forty-Six Entertainment and Forty-Six Entertainment.
Okay.
And they, their specialty is talent purchases. They put on concerts, just like he does, all over them. So, this is really nothing except to make the paperwork easier for the Department of Revenue. That's actually where this originated, Department of Revenue contacted.
Okay. Sounds good, now let's go to the question then.
Any other council comments? Do we have a motion approval of the amendment one to the post opening agreement between the City of Goche and Forty-Six Entertainment for the Sound Amphitheater?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
None.
Councilman Gilat?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson? I mean, Elvin.
No discussion.
All in favor? Councilman Col, uh, George? Councilman Gilat?
Aye.
And Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
I hope y'all are all having a great time. Motion carries. And Councilman College just said I have lipstick on my cheek. Um, don't go tell everybody that now that it's on Facebook, though. That brings us to our study agenda, which is discuss citizen comments. First up is Mr. Marty Whelan. You have three minutes, come to the podiums, take your first and last name. Councilman College will hold up this fancy one when you have one minute. When your three minutes is up, I'll say, have a seat, thank you for coming tonight. And if you don't have a seat, our truly over here to our left, Deputy Chief Bond, will be glad to escort you out for the evening.
All right, my name's Marty Whelan, I live at sixteen twelve Value Vista. And I'm talking about the legal building that the city staff recommended not get built, because it's against the U D O. And city council didn't take their advice on their advisement, so they allowed it to get built. And then the court ruled that it should not have been built also. Supreme Court of Mississippi, so there was no basis to build the building, no basis for the building permit. And there was never a building permit issued for the owner of that property to build the building. So, I would just like the city to follow the U D O, which they wrote, you guys wrote it. You made the rules, so follow the rules that you wrote. And follow the laws of the state of Mississippi. Remove the building and remove the foundation. All you really need is a wrench and a screwdriver to remove the building. And I came up here today at two fifteen to talk to Josh Danos about this, because he's been ignoring my attorney. But there's no need to talk to my attorney anymore, because this was settled three years ago, three years ago by the Supreme Court. It's over, legally. And he wasn't here, so I asked to talk to Scott Ankerson, who advised city council eight years ago not to allow the building to be built. And he stated why, and city council ignored it, they voted for it. Yes, you voted against it, but... Others brought up these, anyway, I'm not gonna get into all that tonight. So, uh, and then I wanted to speak to the city manager, Ms. Yancy, but Danos also instructed her not to talk to me, but the legal matter is over, so. I've been sitting here since two fifteen this afternoon. And I think, you know, the legal matter's over. You can talk to me. It's been eight years. Also, I'm wondering if, uh, Mr. Danos is really the best person to represent the city. I don't think he is.
You're trying to set Mr. Whelan?
I think it's a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Boardes, can you request Mr. Danos contact Mr. Whelan and Mr. Whelan's attorney, and schedule a meeting, and discuss, and get an update to him as soon as possible?
Certainly will.
Thank you. Mr. Whelan, does that help you? I hope it will.
Well, I've been here for eight years.
Well, we're gonna get him to respond to you. Next, Mr. Gino Bass?
Gino Bass, forty-eight twenty Coventry. First, thank you, the speeders have slowed down tremendously in this game, but a little more. And we still haven't got a street sign for Coventry after five years. We mentioned it last time up here, we still don't have one. And, uh, do we get with the police department to start a neighborhood watch in my area? Do I need to do that?
They can arrange, we had a, um, neighborhood watch meeting one time with your neighborhood, um, but then...
Didn't know about it.
They, they, we held it at the church across from the entrance there. But we can get with the deputy chief, you can after the meeting, and get some contact information. We'll be glad if you get some neighbors together and wanna host one. Um, with myself, Councilman Anderson, and Councilman College will be glad to, um, host another neighborhood watch meeting with your neighborhood.
Thank you.
And the street sign, Ms. Morgan, is on order? Okay. That's the update, Mr. Bass, thank you for coming. Danny Mashburn?
I already got my answer, I reckon, all that, and what I was looking for, I didn't know what the problem was, about golf carts. And it was on the sidewalks, which I didn't know that was what, I wanted to find out what was going on.
Mr. Mashburn, just take your address real fast for the record.
Excuse me?
Just take your address real fast for the record. Your address?
Two one one two West Gate Parkway.
Thank you.
So I was interested in what was going on with the golf carts. All I know is, like you say, I don't know, didn't know, I hadn't heard, I hadn't checked in on it from my own failure, that we, if it was recognized somewhere else, you'd recognize it here. That's what I don't know about other places too, the Ocean Springs or whatever, recognize, huh, Goche, you see.
No.
And they done changed their amendments and all that and everything else, and we got out of sight. I don't be risking mine over there.
Right.
Talking about sidewalks, though, I go ride on the sidewalk. Even though I have the fines. But I can't get out of the neighborhood. I have no way to get out of the neighborhood and go nowhere else. All I can do is ride down West Gate. Maybe a few little Wall Streets ain't a hundred foot long. I can't go nowhere. So, I'd like to see something done about being able to get from Port in town. I know that I've been to other places that had accesses through for bikes at golf carts. And I heard the state that bicycles are for sidewalks and walk, I mean, walking bicycle. The way I always, I grew up and understood, bicycle's supposed to have the same rules as an automobile, so he's not supposed to be on the sidewalk either. Now, I know it's kinda dangerous even riding down, uh, Goche Van Leeve, Ladde, or whatever, on a bicycle. I hate, hate that, I seen the guy riding with three-wheeler. I'd hate that, but I think we need a path for bicycles to car. And I may think I was interested in knowing what he would.
Okay, thank you for coming. That brings us to Fort Leonard Frederick.
My name is Leonard Frederick, I live at sixteen oh five Garden Lane, Goche. I'm right across the bayou from Mr. Whelan, he's my neighbor. And every morning I get up and look at Trump Tower across the bayou. This has been going on since, uh, twenty fourteen. It's been litigated, just like Mr. Whelan said. I'd like to remind everybody here, we started this meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. At the end of the pledge of allegiance, it says, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Whelan is part of that all, I'm part of that all. It's been litigated, it went to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court went back to the Chancery Court with a ruling that it was put up illegally and had the permit was supposed to be pulled, which means it has to be taken down. The Chancery Court tried to work out an agreement, couldn't do it, so the Chancery Court hung it and put it down to the city. Has been four years ago, four years. How many of you have been down at sixteen sixteen Value Vista? It shouldn't have never been put up in the first place. Like I said, I call it Trump Tower. But that's neither here nor there. It's been litigated, the building by directions, the Supreme Court of State of Mississippi says it must come down. Now, I don't know why we keep kicking the can down the road. I guess we're waiting on somebody to die so we won't have to do it, I don't know. But I think that it's time to resolve the problem. I provided a solution back in twenty sixteen when I was in Portland, Mr. Whelan. I sent a letter to the judge, I said, if you wanna get some equity, have the city buy the building, the city take it down, move it to city property, you would have, you would have a good building. Then he wouldn't have a reason to sue you, because he got his permit the way he thought he should. The city lawyers, or not the city, but the lawyers at the time objected. The judge put it in the record, they objected, he took it back out of the record. I'm sure there's something we can work out where the city can benefit also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claude Stubbs? Mr. Boardes is saying response, thank you.
Claude Stubbs, twenty-five oh one Value Vista, negotiate. Uh, my topic for today is debris pickup. Uh, it takes, well, it didn't take, because I never got it removed. I moved it myself, pushed on the trash pile, it burned. I put debris out in my front, in my front yard, and it stayed out there for over a month. I went to negotiate office, requested twice to have, you know, people to come by and pick it up. It was put out there on weekends, so they come and pick up our trash on Monday or Tuesday morning. So, someone sees it. But it wasn't reported, they didn't come by the first week, sat there, next week it sat there, then I went by and inquired about, you know, somebody reported. Supposedly reported, they never came by. Went back again, and a week later, wasn't, never came by and picked it up. So I went out there and picked up the pile of trash or debris, and then I removed it, put it in the backyard on a pile, and I'm burning the little guy bill, you know, with the water and everything like that that I have to waste, that doesn't go around the sewer, that I have to pay for, because it's Goche water. That's costing me more money for something that they should be providing service for. That bill is on my bill, that we have to pay water every month for them to pick up debris, that doesn't happen. So I like that, you know, people are on the street, it happens. The other thing is, I'd like for the Goche fines to surveil the car wash, it's summertime now, two o'clock in the morning, boom boxes on the weekends. I mean, I don't have to go, I don't work, but, you know, other people do. But, you know, there's no reason that music should be that loud at two o'clock in the morning, so. You know, I'd like for somebody to, you know, ride by periodically, maybe to take that away, you know, on the weekends. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stubbs, next time, if you'll also, if you don't get a response when you report something within a few days, you know Ms. Yancy's number here to City Help, please call her. If you don't get a response then, please call, you can call myself, Councilman College, or Councilman Anderson, and we'll be glad to try to help you, so you don't have to wait until a board meeting. Ms. Dela Moore?
Hello.
Hey.
Dela Moore, nineteen twenty, West Gate Parkway. I just wanna say, I complain about the water, it's, it's clear, it's been clear for a few days, so I don't have that complaint. Uh, it's the worst of time to talk about Russ the Anderson. But overall, the city of Goche is doing very good, and I'm proud to be a citizen of Goche, and I just want to commend you guys over and over again, and this little fire crack over here. She's doing a great job, so I just have positive things to say. I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July celebrations, thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle, for those kind comments. Mr. Charles Moore? And Mr. Moore will answer your comments, so we don't waste your three minutes. But people with electric wheelchairs, they, um, we are not going to get on to anybody that's handicapped and need to ride.
Those are allowable.
Those are allowed. And they are ADA, they're supposed to be ADA compliant, so they can utilize them.
Okay, man, another thing, I wanna see Goche grow.
Oh, take your address, sorry, Mr.
My name is Charles Moore. My name is Charles Moore, I live in nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Goche, Mississippi. I like to see, we like to see Goche grow. I got a lot of people from Westgate here, and, uh, we wanna see it grow better. Russ Anderson is not putting effort to make it grow. I want him out, so when you start calling people nasty, trying to give them identity, that's not good. To me, he need to leave. And I wanna see Goche be a better Goche, a better, we grown, I wanna be better. So that's all I got to say. Russ Down, do we talk?
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
All right.
Ms. Montgomery, for the record, when you get done? That brings us to discuss council comments, and first up will be Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, I guess, I guess I'll just make it aware that, uh, about the basketball teams. I've been going out to see the youth basketball play, they're doing real well. Looks like we got some good champions coming along. Um, I'm glad that we, uh, have Pee-wee basketball now, and that it's something that I was looking forward to, us participating in. And now we actually there, so kudos to y'all for, um, Ms. Billbo and all, and all, for putting that together, for getting that established, and now we have that going in our city. And, uh, whatever the children need, um, I wanna see the city provide whatever y'all need to make that the best that we can. And, um, so also, I'll be, um, the funds that we have, that we receive, we receive some extra funds for Baycott. Uh, would like to put a water fountain out there, because we do have a lot of children that's out there that, I mean, we got water bottles that, that just filling up the, uh, the garbage cans, because it's, you know, once you out there, it's hot, and they run around playing ball, you're gonna drink a lot of water, because I was out there, and I was hot, I'm, I'm telling you. During the summertime, they don't stop playing ball, they still playing in this, in this gusting heat that you, you feel right now. They still out there playing ball, so, I mean, you can just imagine the need for water, so we wanna provide that. Um, I wanna make sure that we put that on the... Um, I want to make sure that we put that on the bucket list, um, for the funds we receive. And, um, what else? Um... And we was discussing a walking trail, but I, if we, if we, I, in the original plans, um, I don't know if this is going to fit with the amount of money that we have, but whatever we have, I want to see it, I want to be able to, if the board is along with it, to be able to put a track around a football field, one that's like, built like, say, for instance, actual track, so that they can train. And, uh, you know, the elderly can use it as well, but it would actually have more benefits to the youth as well because they can actually run track and they can practice track out there. So that our, the development of our youth, for its athletics, they develop better and things like that. Um, we was, uh, discussing about the paths, the, um, for the, um, the...
Garfunkel.
Garfunkel, yes. The coffee, yeah, this coffee just not doing no justice for me right now. Um, we do need, like, if, you know, if you're coming out of, um, neighborhoods where they don't have a path where you can go, it would be good if we had some type of path, like going to the amphitheater. Because this will help more customers, more people, uh, patronizing the business, et cetera, if, if they had some form of path where they can come from, um, I don't know, Westgate and whatever, whatever else is in that area, where they can come to, down to the, uh, closer to Highway ninety, uh, to patronize the business and things like that. That would be great. So if we consider that, we can, uh, start looking into that, that would be a great path. That was a great idea, whoever brought it up. I think that that's, uh, that's a great idea for, we need a trail for that. Um, on the trash pickup, um, I'm aware of that too, because I, I made some wrong calls about some trash pickup. Um, it was a delay in it, high up there. Um, so we do need to look into it, to see what we can do to better service the, uh, the public. And, um, Mr. Moore, I totally agree with you. I'm, I'm with you one hundred percent, brother. And, um, we do need to move this city forward, and it's a blessing to see your wife here. Once again, she is a strong supporter of Goche and speaks well and, uh, helps us to move this city forward. And I have no, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat. Councilman Gilat.
No comment.
Um, we would like to wish your wife, Ms. Lynette Myers, uh, happy birthday. Um, Ms. Lynette Myers Gilat a happy birthday this evening. So on our behalf, if you will, um, wish her a happy birthday, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us to Councilman College.
Uh, just like to wish everybody a happy July fourth. Uh, I know this may fall on some deaf ears, but I still want to acknowledge that fireworks are technically illegal within city limits. So please try to contain yourselves as much as you can, because that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, College. Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. I love that. No comment.
And safe travels back to see your family. Councilman Elbin.
As always, I want to thank our city employees for the work you do each and every day, uh, boots on the ground, you know, what makes this city run. Thank you to the contract partners for the work you do as well. And everybody have a blessed and very safe Independence Day.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Um, I have several things. Last week, I wanted to thank our city manager and our city clerks department for arranging, and our sponsors, um, that hosted us, um, during our Mississippi Municipal League Conference. And it was great to visit with the other state leaders in our state to see what challenges they have to address their challenges and things that we can do better or new ideas for us, and we share our ideas with them. And it's just a great time, um, to get together and be blessed in the state of Mississippi for all we have to offer compared to what some and other areas don't have. So, um, I thank all of you who arranged, and thank the police department for bringing our city flag over there to be a part of the display of the flags, and thank the clerk for getting that ordered, and our PR, um, for getting that order, um, ordered and able to represent us in a bright, positive light. Also, um, I want to thank a citizen, Mr. Wayne Goldar. Um, organized a community event, um, last week. And I just, you know, community events are important, and that's what helps grow your community, that helps attract economic development. And kudos to him and his spouse and his son and all the volunteers and all the vendors that participated. It was a great, um, event. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I did speak with Mr. Goldar, and he knew wine. Um, and I commend him on his efforts. He also has a social media page, um, that has some positive highlights every day of words of encouragement. And I think that's what this world needs at this time more than ever, is some positive encouragement. So, um, if you don't know, um, him, you can Facebook him, um, and it pops up, and it is some great positive information about Goche. Also, our recreation department, um, Ms. Bilbo, um, you know, their department in this heat, um, go above and beyond every day, but in the heat, it's even harder. But it's not only her department. They have another, other employees in other departments who volunteers to make events. But their partnership this past weekend with the Jackson County Recreation Department to host a campout at Shepherd State Park to showcase the beauty of Goche and to give those children a nice dinner, um, a nice movie. It was just a great time to fellowship, and kudos to all y'all for your hard work. And I know all those little darlings had a great time, and I know we were all hot, hot, hot. But just see them enjoying themselves, um, was a great time. So also, I want to, um, thank them. I want to thank all the citizens who take time out of your busy schedule to come be a part of Goche and be able to know what's going on in your community so you can go out and share the positive and share what's going on for those who might not see it on Facebook Live or see the agenda or whatever. But I encourage you to continue to be positive and go share the positive because we have a lot to be blessed for and a lot going on. Last, um, two things. July the second, nineteen seventy-nine, does anybody know what happened on that day in history? Well, it was an important day, um, for a lady, and it was Susan B. Anthony. The dollar was issued, the first U.S. coin to honor a woman. I feel like that's very important in history, but also, that day in nineteen seventy-nine, it was somebody else's very special day. And that person is dedicated to this city more than I don't even know. That person is a classmate, a childhood friend of mine. That person works for this city for over, at seventeen years. The person has worked in the utility department, the planning department, the city clerks department, black to the planning department, and also volunteers in the recreation department and is the popcorn maker at all of our events. So today, I want to wish that special person a happy birthday, Ms. Shanda Bain, because I know you were watching, and we all wish you a happy birthday. So can y'all give her a big round of applause? I wish her many more days of happiness, and I hope she celebrates her month big, more than just today. And I hope she enjoys her time off on her vacation or comp time or whatever, because she's very deserving. Um, so, uh, I hope you all have a great evening, and God bless you all. Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, Mayor, I have an item that was submitted earlier in the list on the agenda that I've been working on with Scott Ankersen and for quite some time now. So there's, on Lane Drive, there is an old flat easement. There is a property that was never developed, and the easement was never utilized by the city in order for it to develop. The property is undeveloped, but it's owned by Michael Quikett. And if I'm not mistaken, if I'm wrong, Scott, the easement goes right through the middle of the prop, of his property. So he requested that we abandon the easement if we weren't using it. So I had Lamona and H two O go out and make sure that there was nothing there that we were using. It is not. In fact, it's got huge trees in the middle of it, which is indicative that it's not been used for the public for quite some time. So forgive my crink typing, but, uh, you have a copy of an order that I drafted. And basically, what it says is, is it identifies the partial portion of the easement of Lane Drive that you will be declaring abandoned through prolonged non-use. And I ask the attorney, me and myself, the mayor, and the city clerk to execute and sign whatever documents and prepare whatever documents are necessary to memorialize. That's kind of the simple version. So nothing you're using. It's just something that's old that we never used. So when you abandon that, then that takes your easement out in the middle of... We've done it before. I can't remember the name of the road or the layout of the house. You remember the name of that? No, I haven't been, it's been a last year, where a couple easements cut through the middle to my yard. Nobody was using. So that's basically the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Shantsey regarding that?
Yes, is there any flooding? Like, has this area got any flooding? I'm looking at it under map. I'm seeing some rounded waters. So will that affect, like, if he builds something on this particular property, will it affect the flooding of the other property?
No, but whatever he, if he builds anything, he's still about to go to the planning department and get all that.
Make sure the water's routed. Okay.
We also didn't see the public works out to look at the property to make sure we weren't using it for stormwater runoff.
Right. That's, that's my question. I have no other questions.
Councilman, um, College. Councilman Elbin. Councilman George. Did y'all hear, Ms. Shantsey, Councilman George, Councilman Gilat, Councilman Anderson?
No question. No comment. No comment.
Okay. Do we have a motion by council, um, to approve an order finding the position of the easement on Lane Drive abandoned through prolonged non-use?
Sub move.
Have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilat?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Also, real fast, I forgot to mention, um, tomorrow night, if you are out and about and you want to stop by the American Legion, Goche, Goche Van Cleve Post nineteen ninety-two, um, feel free, they have a reception from five to six and a dinner. They have, um, the national president, Lisa Williamson, who will be visiting Coastal Mississippi and our GI Museum, the Veterans Tribute Tower here, and also the post tomorrow evening. And she is the, um, national president for the American Auxiliary Women of American Legion. So we'll be blessed to have her in our beautiful, um, city tomorrow and entertaining her. Also, I just want to thank, um, me and Ms. Shantsey were meeting with some developers last week, and also when I was at the Municipal League Conference and also at, um, a restaurant recently. I want to give kudos to, um, H two O. Our hallway is looking great. And when you drive through, you can tell, and people want to know who's doing it. And that's our new Public Works Service Provider. And I know, um, I brag on them a lot, but you have to brag on good help. And I brag on and thank all of our city employees. But H two O, their staff, they are doing a fine job trying to clear up back orders, um, work orders that are prolonged, and they will get to it. If you feel like you got something reported and overlooked, please feel free to call Public Works, and they'll follow up and check on it and try to get it resolved for you. But y'all, or Michael, please thank your staff. Also, Waste Pro back there. Um, David, if you could stand up, um, David Olson, please. Waste Pro, um, David has not been here, but I want to thank you all. We had a veteran in our community, and I thanked them in a meeting, and they were not here. But personally, I want to thank you. Um, they are a great partnership. We had a veteran that we needed to help, and the American Legion had volunteers, and Waste Pro was able to step up and, um, give, um, assistance for a dumpster so we could get the residence home cleaned and livable again. So thank you all also for your hard work. We appreciate that also. And that brings us to our city clerk comments. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. And our city attorney is out this evening, but we have his law partner, Mr. Chuck Boardy's here with us this evening. Do you have any comments?
Mr. Danos had none, but I will say this. Mr. Whelan, had I known that you had this concern to bring up tonight, I would have prepared a response for you. I'll make sure that Mr. Danos comes back to your attorney.
Well, that's fine, but I'm also capable of speaking for myself and, uh, you know, I know attorneys want to generate resonance, but I'm getting a little bit tired of that. But he can talk to me, he can also talk to my attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Boardy. Um, Ms. Morgan, do you have anything positive you would like to share with us from your department? Ms. Seishet, would you, do you have anything positive from your department? Ms. Bilbo, anything positive from your department? Deputy Chief Bond, do you have anything from the police department?
I have a seat at the court.
Mr. Ankersen, anything from your department?
Yeah, I've got a list here. Thank you for wishing one of my favorite employees a happy birthday.
You're welcome. I know that meant a lot to her because she is probably gleaming right now because she is so deserving of that. Deputy Chief Latch? I mean, Chief Latch. I'm sorry. I think it's still at the police department.
So next week, we're traveling to Ocala, Ocala, Florida to do the finishing touches on my manufacturers, and we will keep them with us shortly after.
Yes, and for y'all who don't know, that is going to be Gator Nation rolling in, I ten, down Goche Van Cleve Road, and its first stop before the station can be Goche Haskell, so those darlings can see the pride and joy that we take in our youth. But it will be forever greatly appreciated. And yes, we had ordered ours first, but unfortunately, it's arriving last. But it'd be something we will be proud of. So thank you, Chief, for your hard work to get that for us. Do we have a motion to recess until July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P.M.?
Fourteenth or sixteenth?
Sixteenth, I'm sorry.
Sub move.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilat?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.